Calling to order the meeting of the Oxford Downtown Development Authority for November 18th, 2024. Could you please all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that good? Can we do a roll call, please?
Sure. Schultz is excused. Charles Powers.
Here.
Holden here. Clark.
Here.
Knoss. Here. Mikasia.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
And Taylor.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on non-agenda items? No? Okay. Consent agenda? We do have a addition to the proposed agenda. We are going to add nine E for a board member resignation.
Nine E, you said?
Nine E. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the agenda in meeting minutes, please.
Let me take a quick look here. Should we also have on here committee appointment, too?
We do.
I missed it then. What?
It's nine C.
It's nine C. It's already on there.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Just move my eyeballs up, okay?
We'll keep you real, Ron.
I'll second the motion.
No one made a motion?
No one made one. I'll say. You said that, so I see.
I'm waiting for the motion.
I'll make a motion that we add nine E to the agenda, which is...
I have a motion to approve A and B.
Can I? I'm sorry. I made a mistake earlier. It's nine F.
Nine F.
We do have an E. Yes, my mistake.
Well, good. I can take back everything I just said.
Yes. We can go to the next page.
Yeah, my mistake.
No, that's okay. Nine F.
Nine F.
Yes. Now, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the modified agenda and approve the October 2024 meeting minutes.
Okay.
Score.
Okay, score.
Discussion.
Yes, discussion.
Yeah, a couple of comments on that, just real quickly, for the sake of the record, is that the organization committee minutes were emailed out, but I guess they didn't make it to the packet for print. So everybody should have a copy of that at some point in time. Kimberly, you said you got one earlier today?
Well, I requested it on Friday after our meeting. We did not receive it. So I put the agenda in the packet because we have to get the packet out in a timely fashion. So it came in today, late in the day.
So you didn't print it out?
So I did not, no.
Just so you know, we do have minutes in the agenda for the organization committee.
Can I request that we have those in a more timely fashion, so they are in the packet?
Yeah, talk to the chairperson, as Cindy says.
Will do.
Okay, five C.
We have to vote.
Oh, yes, yes. You're gonna do a roll call or just a yes or no?
I'd say just, we can just say yes.
We can say yes or no.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All not approved? Okay, consent agenda, C, police report, and D, code enforcement report.
I'll make the motion to receive and file the police report and the code enforcement report.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And new? The financials? We have the financial statement and revenue expenses report and the bills for October of 2024.
Motion to approve financials of items A and B with bills in the amount of $16,458.62.
I'll second. Okay, I think we have to take a vote on this, right?
We've rolled call through.
Yeah, no call hold.
Taylor?
Yes?
Piper?
Yes.
Mikasia?
Yes.
Knoss?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holden, yes. Charles?
Yes.
And Powers?
Yes. Okay, DDA reports, the OR committee report.
So, you wanna start with the OR committee?
Yep.
All right, let me just pull up some of my notes so I can remember what's being pronounced, if I got it here. Except for the picture of my... I can't tune in from Muscat or... Let me get done, Kimberly, if I wanna fill in. She was there for most of the meeting. We started, so, let's see here. We had Chairperson Brad Jacobson, Randy Lavass here, myself, Kimberly Smith, Scott Taylor was there pending following the bylaw protocol, and then Village Manager Joe Mador came in toward the end there, too. We discussed the trolley, the issues with maintenance on the trolley, some of the problems we've had with the trolley and repairing it, and the possibility I brought up of selling it at some point in the future. We paid a few guys, I don't know who was on the board then, but $6,100 bucks for the trolley. We put a lot of money into it, and I understand that the financials right now is that we share the operating expenses with Ori, but the maintenance costs, we pay. So that's something I think we need to address fairly soon, and then the time obviously invested by the executive director to keep track of what's going on, and the people that call when they're left behind and things like that. And then Scott brought up, Scott Taylor brought up the possibility that if we do sell the trolley, that we could employ NODA to bring people back and forth between Ori and Oxford. And as you know, if you follow stuff, we had a big tax increase in Oakland County to pay for mass transportation, so they certainly had the capacity to do that. So just presuming that as an FYI to keep in mind that we might sell the trolley, or we might consider selling the trolley at some point, and that if we did, we could still maintain the shuttle back and forth between the two communities. We discussed, as I said, a job description for executive director and compensation I brought up at this meeting, plus apparently at the village council meeting. And let's see here. We talked about hiring an assistant to the executive director. Kimberly brought up that it's a challenging position unless another person is hired, you know, with all the time involved. And then she pointed out that there's money in the budget to hire another person, and in conjunction with that, we said there's a need for a master list. Well, that's a little bit separate, but that was a big part of the conversation as far as compensation, if we should hire a person, and we did look at it, and when we left, we finished at 5:47, we agreed that we would do a job description ASAP. I know Randy Lavass here and Brad Jacobson are working on it as we speak, and I believe, I didn't see my emails today, maybe you got something, Kimberly, but I think they finished a job description for an assistant to the executive director. The conversations were about hours, compensation, benefits, those kind of things like that. Is that very true, Scott, as far as your memory in the meeting, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you want me to? Because I did. Do you want me to speak to that?
If you want to right now, it'd be a good time. I've got more of it. Let's take a break, so I can catch my breath.
So, yeah, Brad did send something today that he said he had hoped to meet this afternoon and that that wasn't going to happen. His only suggested changes were to reduce the hours from what I submitted as a recommendation, and then to include, because I, so just to back up for a moment, I included a job description that I put together for the OR committee. It's on the back of your packet. We'll get to that later if you want. And so he also wanted to clarify availability that weekend and evening hours may be required. But those were the only two pieces that he had as suggestions to what I presented, which is what is in your packet.
In a compliment to Brad and Randy both, they put a lot of time and asked the meeting to put that together, so it was something we felt was critical enough that we would, or they would work ahead of time. In fact, we were scheduled to meet tonight, those two, but then, of course, we had the board meeting.
I have permission of myself for a question.
Do we have, what number of hours did we set on, or haven't we?
We haven't. I suggested 20 to 30. I left the position. I came in between 12 and 15, and then it was extended to 20 on weeks that had events. And then over this past summer, it was moved up to 25 hours per week over the summer. You know, over the last month, I've been doing both jobs, probably neither very well, just trying to keep the ship afloat at this point. So my suggestion was because I know, you know, the conversations that I had with my predecessor, talking about making that secondary position a full-time position. Certainly, I think when the strategic planning process went through, it was clarified from that individual that is a third party that also felt the need to have a second full-time position. That would be my preference, but at this point, because of the workload, I would be fine with a part-time with the potential to discuss full-time going in our next budget cycle.
Okay, so...
But just to, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I don't know that 10 to 20 hours would be suitable for the secondary position. I feel like that's far too low.
So we discussed that, like I said, and a big part was job description, too, and hours and benefits and things along those lines. Mr. Mador, you're here right now, too. I know that's, I got more to go on this, too. I'm just reading from my notes myself, but anything you wanna add about that, that issue there, job description, compensation, hours, et cetera, budget?
No, I guess one of the conversations with council was, the council by statute approves the budget, and then the DDA adopts it, and that's clearly in the statute. So again, to Kimberly's point, the current statute budget has X amount of dollars in for a full-timer and a part-timer, as was approved last spring. If you're gonna come and move to a two-full-time position within the budget, it requires some type of a budget amendment, and council position, so that would have to come back then for that to be something outside of what was approved for council. And so again, Kimberly's got to pick maybe the next budget cycle, which makes sense. Work through where you can now, with the hours, to help her to the next four, five months before the next budget cycle hits.
When does the next budget cycle hit?
We have to adopt our budget in May. So we usually have budget workshops in like April, one or two in April, sometimes maybe early in March, might have one, but April for sure. And our main meeting, we have to adopt the budget, which is roads, water, sewer, general, DDA.
So would you want to have the DDA do our budget in advance of that budget or following your budget?
So DDA can put the budget together, and they recommend that the council, and council approves the budget per statute, and then once it's approved by council, then the DDA can adopt it. That's where the oversight comes from, from the taxing authorities for tips.
So village first, then DDA?
Yes. If you're, according to statute, it says that the local municipality adopts the budget and then the DDA, I'm sorry, approves the budget, and then the DDA adopts. That's how it's spelled out in the statute.
That's, that's a big issue, by the way, as far as government kind of stuff, kinda like what you're saying about the buildings and stuff.
Well, I do have one question, 'cause, and I don't know if this is, can I speak man in residence?
Yes, yes.
At the, so, just to back up a little bit, just so I'm making sure that I have the facts correct. We all voted that Pete would make, negotiate a contract with Kimberly, and basically went back to what Kelly started at 40 years ago, right? And we all voted that in. Well, then, at the village council meeting, they decided to chop that from $70,000 down to $62,000, and we're coming up with some sort of step programs or like, things like that. So it was already a budgeted item, and she is our only employee, so do we not get to determine what she's paying?
Those are two different questions. So yes, budgeted has room for the existing salary plus a part-time salary, but the state statute says that the municipality, when approved, DDA directors' employment and salary are approved by the local municipality. So I incorrectly, I told Pete, well, you guys can hire, that DDA has approved the salary, and he reiterated that tonight, but I was reading it wrong. It's really, you make recommendations for the hire and the salary, and if you look back, and Pete's gone through this cycle many times, Kelly Westbrook was hired as an interim at X amount per hour, for like 30, 45 days, whatever, before it went to council, then it was approved by council. But, so the state statute is pretty clear, the DDA employees and fixes the salary, subject to, in this case, the village officer. So the village officer has final say on employment, selection, and salary.
Okay.
So in essence, that night, you, what you guys basically made was a recommendation, not only for the salary, which was clearly discussed that night, but for the recommendation for the hiring of the position type of. I initially read it wrong and told Pete, yeah, you guys can hire, you guys can employ, but have the salary is approved by council. But that one, if you read the statute, it's, they approve both.
Okay.
But as far as the budget goes, as far as Kimberly and a second person, that's already within the budget amount that you have set. So, you know, her salary and that person, whether it's 15, 20, 30 hours, whatever it is, those dollars are already budgeted for her.
Well, I guess that's my, that's my main question is, it is budgeted for $70,000.
For the other person.
But for that position.
Yes. This is a new hire, so that still falls back to under the employee and sets the salary, according to the statute.
I got you.
So what is the next step, then? It seems like we're kind of backtracking.
Well, no, I just wanted to bring that up because, like, we talked about it in the OR meeting, and there was some surprise, like, well, I thought that we were the ones that determined, because that's kind of what I gleaned from our conversation at last meeting. So I said, you know, why would we even have our chair negotiate that contract if it doesn't really matter what we say? Because literally, we, you know, they did a deep dive into it to determine what it was. It was what the starting salary was four years ago without, you know, any cost of living or anything like that. And I guess my other thing is, you know, we basically offered this job at X, and she said, yes, I'll, you know, I would be interested in it, and now it's 10 grand less. So I mean, I'm just thinking of it as someone that's went through contract negotiations and things like that, like, that can be a deal breaker when you're talking about a $70,000 job going to a $62,000 job. So that's, I just wanna make sure that we all know that that's what happened, and, I mean, if, if that's the law, that's the law. But I, I think that there's some misinterpretation of what we can actually do, because if it's not our job or not our responsibility to actually negotiate her contract, we shouldn't even talk to her about it. She should be talking, we should say, this is who we wanna hire, and then she should have to go to the village council and negotiate that, because I think we, we don't look very smart right now. I mean, I just, I think it's very, I think it's insulting, for the life. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, and I met with Chairman Pete, and I think he might have been there at the same time as I, I met with Pete, and I told my, I said, Pete, I was reading the statute wrong, because I was reading it like, you guys employ and affix the salary subject to council. But if you read the statute without a comment, because there isn't one, it says they employ and set the salary subject to council. And so I gave Pete, I gave him Pete the wrong impression that you guys employ, and the only thing subject to council was the salary. So once I realized, looked at that again and read it again, like, okay, that's not right. So you guys were led wrong by my interpretation to Pete, that he, and that's what I explained to him, and I explained to Kimberly as well. So that's how it got down the path wrong. So either way, you guys, you choose and you recommend her for the position, and you choose to recommend X salary. Both of those go to council for final approval. So, yeah, to your point, you guys thought you were going, going down this path when you actually had to go down a different path, and that was because the way I read it and told Pete wrong myself.
Punctuation errors.
Yes. I was reading a comma, and there's probably not there. It's employees and sets the salary or fixes the salary, I can't spell it out, subject to the local municipality.
Ron?
Well, I gotta finish the minutes here, but one quick comment on the salary part of it, Scott, that the salary, you said it wasn't increased, it was, there have been increases every year.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not like it hasn't been increased over four years. That's not accurate.
No, he's saying they set that to the $62,000, which was what Kelly was...
Four years ago.
Kelly was hired then.
But she started, she started in the 50s, that's not true.
So that's what I think he was saying, though, that's what he was saying.
That's not accurate either.
Yeah. So I, I broken down year to year, each year, what the hiring was, what interim salary was, what it started at then in March of that year, I think it was, it started interim in January, it started in March, the following year, the following year. I gave the council a breakdown every year, and in those three-year periods, there's a 26.6% increase that was given. So they had that, they had comparisons of all of our department heads, including our, myself, 35 years, superintendent, chief, police chief, our clerk and treasurer, all those, they have all that information in the background if we got to weigh in.
So we also finish this.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I don't know which of proper.
Yes.
Is there, is, is her appointment to the position confirmed?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, got it. So now it's just a question of her, what her salary is going to be.
And, and, and they made a motion to approve what they approved with those steps into it, similarly, as they do with their clerk and treasurer position.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and I'll finish a little bit more, too. What myself, Randy, Brad, Scott talked about is those step increases that Mr. Mador just mentioned as we go forward, based on some training classes, I think, where they, September, is that right?
September and September.
Right?
So there, I mean, I don't know how detailed you wanna get into it, but...
Not a lot of it, but just a high level.
High level is there are certain stipulations on timing to be certified through the program, so it's not necessarily consistent with what was discussed at the village council meeting. So it needs to be something that we review and basically create ourselves. Or I don't know who I create it with, but it's not as simple as it was presented at the village council.
Because you did some work to figure that out, or?
I did. I talked with the director of the program of the certification, and there's stipulations of having to be in the program for a certain period of time before they will even consider you to get certified. So that wouldn't necessarily, I, there's ways around it. I don't know if we wanna talk about that here. I don't...
That would be an OR committee discussion, you think?
Mr. Mador?
And to the point, what really came up, it's a, a program that says it takes like three years to go through, like 15 steps or 15 areas of expertise they refer to, and they're going to add one more. And part of the problem is, it only starts each year, September 1 of each year, so it's 10 and a half months down the road before she can even begin. And so typically, you know, you think, okay, great, I'm gonna do this, and she can start in December, January, the spring, and start building towards that certification. It's a weird thing, but I think it hasn't even begin, that she could begin the process until September 1. So that's, that's how it doesn't align well with the thought process of moving forward in those steps. If it started in January 1, it would probably be less of a problem. So that, it kind of puts a different, a delay in there that really wasn't meant, that we kind of...
Yeah. Yeah. I think, and again, I think there's ways around that of identifying specific courses that, because that's what was determined during the village council meeting, is there specific courses that they would like to see somebody in that role be proficient in. So if we identify what those courses are, then we can use that step framework with those courses and not put the target end as the certification, because at that point, we're looking at almost four years before I would be able to move up in that progression, if that's as it stands.
Four years, did you say?
Well, it would be nine, 10 months from right now before I would get into the program. And then if the program is three years, yes, that would be close to four years.
That's a little... All right, so I better go ahead before we go out on this rabbit hole any further. But I think it's good discussion, because I think the board needs to be aware of what we talked about, the budget process, that it's in May, because we have to dovetail that budget process with this budget process, as opposed to having them be standalone, which I think was done in the past without knowledge. A couple of other things we talked about, afraid to mention anything, but EV committee isn't reporting tonight, so that'll save some time.
Right.
We talked about appointment to committees, that's on our agenda tonight, so that's cool, because we do have bylaws, and if you notice, I, toward the end of the meeting, we talked about changing or removing the bylaws, but committee member Randy Lavass here, who is a very detailed person, pointed out, we don't need to change any bylaws, we just need to implement the existing ones we have. So we'd have to go through that process, because we've, we've skipped over some of these things over the last couple of years, that being one of them. Let me just pull up my notes here again. One of them is, well, committee reporting, we talked about incessantly, having an agenda, a written agenda, having attendance of committee members and having minutes like we're talking about right now. And then we talked about board member attendance, that's in the bylaws, too. The bylaws state if you miss three meetings, you're done.
Excused.
Yes, it doesn't say that necessarily, but we should have something at a board meeting, so let's say like Pete's gone tonight, that we recognize that and that we accept it as a, I'll use the word excused. Okay, does that make sense? As opposed to someone not showing up, period. And having been on the board for a few years, that's happened frequently, by the way, where somebody just doesn't show up. Now, Pete says, I got surgery, or whatever else, you know, that's okay, but we have to recognize it at a board meeting and take a vote on it when we do our attendance, not to sound like we're in first grade or something like that. But that's, goes back to what Randy said, we should just implement the existing policies. Does that make sense? Everyone mind with that? Just a formality.
Just a question, and I don't know if this has come up, but how would you determine an acceptable excuse? Is it, as long as they're indicating that they're not gonna make the meeting, then it's considered acceptable excuse? Or are you making a determination based on what the reasoning is why they can't make the meeting?
We talked about that, too, and I brought it up because it is kind of sticky. What's excuse, you know, a surgery, funerals, all those kind of things, it just got down...
The Monday Night Football.
Vacation is the biggest one.
Well, that's a good one, if it's the Lions or something like that, right. But we, we kind of decided, really get into that whole sticky mess, is just having the board recognize that somebody's not gonna be here.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's kind of open to this discussion right now, but that's what it came out to be.
Sure.
But three, 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 three absences, let's say we just don't show up in the course of a year, and since January's right around the corner, it makes sense to start keeping track of that for whatever reason.
Have we?
That was our meeting right there, and then we finished it at 5:47.
I would not recommend we start asking for people to provide medical reasons for absences.
Yeah.
I just hope we won't.
It's a huge problem.
No, I think if the board just recognizes that someone's gone for a certain reason, they, they contact the chairperson, or the executive director says, I've got a Lions game, I've got tickets, too, I can't make it, those kind of things, I think we can accept that, as opposed to just not showing up.
How often, and this is just from my knowledge, how often has that happened, where someone has just not shown up?
Well, we haven't kept records, so there's no way of answer in that. I can say anecdotally, in the past, we've had people just not show up.
For committees especially.
No, well, for board meetings.
Well, I know for these, too, but committees, I think, are...
I don't know if the bylaws say that for committee meetings or not.
I think just life happens, and if somebody is contacted that you're not gonna be here, that we're all adults and professionals, that should be sufficient.
But at a board meeting, we have to recognize it as part of our agenda.
Absolutely.
As opposed to just say, okay, Pete's not here tonight, he has surgery. We have to have it in our minutes for the meeting tonight, okay? So, and record it, that has to be recorded. And then January, like I said, there's a start date, it seems to be logically, so we kind of get back on the train of actually following our, our bylaws.
And just as a simple way to do that, at our council meetings, they'll either let Terry or myself know, or perhaps one of the other council members has heard from another council member. So if a member here, it says, hey, I can't, my kid's game tonight, my car broke down, whatever, they could email the chair, they could email the director.
There you go.
And just say, hey, you know what, I just can't make it tonight. It's, it's not a punishment, though, it's to fill a void when someone just blows out meetings for six months in a row.
Sure. Sure.
Right? You don't hear, you don't know why they're not here, they don't communicate, that's really what it's about.
Yeah, it's not punishment, it's just, it's, it's communication.
Right. No shows, no call, no shows, that's what we're trying to eliminate.
I'm, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think from just looking at the minutes from when I've been putting the board packets together, it's typically, because I, Vicky typically takes the notes, it's, it'll indicate excused if they're not there. And I don't recall hearing or seeing much activity around somebody just not showing up.
We have to record that, I guess.
Which I think, but my point is, is I think it's happening.
We tend to do that. I mean, we did it tonight with Pete, so.
Right. Then two more bucket issues. We had a long meeting, by the way, and it wasn't, I mean, it went past, so it was, it was about two and a half hours, long after Kimberly had to leave, and Joe left too, by the way, we finished the meeting. We talked about having a calendar of events, so we all know what's going on in the course of a year, from January, let's say December, be it Soup and Sweet, or whatever else, what's going on? What is the DDA committed to in the course of the year? So that all board members know what we have officially committed to in the community. And then speaking of committees, somebody brought up committees. We do have a form that committee members are supposed to fill out that says I'm on a committee, and they have to be approved. I don't know if we have that, and Kimberly, if maybe next time you got a board committee, if you can put it together, if that's not a, I don't think it's a time consumption issue, but maybe it is, I don't know, but we've never seen one.
I filled one out before I was on the board.
Right.
So to be on a committee.
But we don't know who has and who hasn't, so we just have a list. That's it. Thank God there's no more than minutes, that, those are my minutes. We can all go home now. Well, we had a long, we actually had a pretty long meeting.
Okay, um, seven, we have no EV report tonight. Promo committee report?
Yes, so, gosh, we have had two meetings in this month. And we talked about feedback on Witches Night, which was a really great turnout. Some of the negative feedback was basically that if, you know, it was at home games for Lake Orion and Oxford, so like maybe working around that next year. I know this year we tried, it was just really difficult with the way they, everything felt with homecoming for Lake Orion and Oxford as well. We went over ladies shopping, shopping day, which was this last Saturday, and the, the turnout wasn't as great as, from what we're hearing, it wasn't as great as what we were hoping for. But with that, next is dudes day, where they then come and purchase. So maybe that'll be, hopefully it's better than what we are aware of. We'll know after that, right? Yeah, um, we discussed the Remembrance Day with the Monks and a Hug, and how that's all gonna occur. And then Soup and Sweet Stroll, which is coming really quickly. Lots of organizing for that, because it's a lot of companies in the town that are participating. I, I think we have, is it sixteen?
We have fifteen soups.
Fifteen soups, which is like huge. I think last year we had maybe-
I think thirteen.
Twelve. Oh, okay, alright, I was, for some reason I was thinking we had eight. But I think they tried five or six.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, we've got press and, you know, just all that good thing we get to go over. And then also the upcoming Polar Express and Holiday Market. We didn't really get too much into that right now, we're really focused on the Soup and Sweet Stroll, making sure Kimberly has enough help to actually accomplish all the goals that she needs to do for what we already have planned. So we're kind of dividing some of the work up, trying to help her out, and take some of the load off, because you are doing a great job and on your own, so. Yeah, and we got the word today that we are able to sell nineteen hundred tickets.
Oh.
Wow.
If we, hopefully, yeah. It'd be amazing if we had that many people down the town, so.
As of this morning, we had eight hundred and fifty sold already.
As of what?
And it's been less than a week.
Holy cow.
Yeah. It's pretty exciting.
Do we have enough volunteers?
Oh, gosh, yeah, so I just opened it up more, so, yeah, we're almost filled, so we'll have, yeah. I don't know, gosh, I didn't bring it with me, but I think we had twenty spots for both, like for two, for like three hour stents. Yeah, for, yeah, to break up the actual shifts, and then we had a cleanup and tear down, so. Yeah, we're doing really well with that, so. And it's a good mix of people too, like we have lots of students from both NHS and both high schools. And then we also have several adults that have, you know, just from the community that like to help out, so. It's been a good response, I think, so.
I don't think we would ever turn anybody away who wanted to volunteer, so if you have people, just keep sending them, because we can always find things for them to do.
Yeah.
Just, just feedback on the last couple of years, is there any way we could get garbage cans?
Like for each?
We usually put one out every year, and it's like overflowing, and people constantly ask, where's their, where's their garbage cans? So I don't know if that's something DPW can-
They put out, excellent in the cards sometimes, but I don't think they put out around all of different stations. I think they kind of use it up to the restaurant, they have their own.
Yeah, but when you're the only restaurant on the block that has a garbage can.
Yeah. But we're like a business, and we do, we put-
Maybe to two out of the block or something, I mean, it wouldn't have to be every business.
I would agree with that, just to keep it easier for cleanup as well, so.
I think we had seven bags of garbage last year, just from part of our stores.
It was quite a bit, because otherwise they don't know what to do with the soup after they walk away.
Right, I mean, it's a natural question.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if we can't accommodate it, you know, through the village or the DDA, then at least maybe let the business owners know, that they should be equipped with a garbage can.
And we can, from the DDA standpoint, I mean, financially, we would just buy probably those like cardboard, like disposable ones with the garbage bags in there, and then maybe we could have volunteers collecting that at some point, if, if that's not something that-
It's just feedback, I just think we need to manage it somehow, because-
I think it's a great point.
Good idea.
Okay, is that it, Holly?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks, Holly. No, that's okay. Design committee report?
Kimberly, I wasn't there, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so we had a shorter meeting, because there was not a lot of attendance. What we focused primarily on was the fall decor removal, and then the, the holiday decor setup, so that's going to happen this Friday. Also looking for volunteers for that. We have the lock program coming to help. We'll have members from the design committee. Four individuals came late last week, and we went through all of the materials in our storage area and kind of divided those out between the different locations that we're going to be decorating over the holidays. We talked about a quote from Excel Brothers for the downtown lighting, which we'll pause on, the quote is in here, but we'll pause on the motion until we get further along in the agenda. We, during the meeting, we did not discuss anything regarding the historical sign project, because the individuals that were point people for those projects were not there. So they recommended that we move forward with the holiday lights, but other than that, we didn't really get into some of the other pieces. There were no sign or facade grant applications, we talked through upcoming events, and, yeah.
Yes, oh, yes, Brad.
We had a conversation about the Mark Young Jewelers facade grant. Can you give a follow up on that, because we were going to wait until we found out that deal went through?
Yep, so I talked with the business owner, and they said that the, the, the only holdup was some sort of paperwork. There was nothing that was holding, there was nothing questionable about the deal. So they moved forward and they were having their sign replaced.
So when would we issue them a check? After they're done?
After they submit their receipts.
Sign's up. The sign's up.
Yeah, they were working on it and making it all pretty, they did a good job.
Did they? We did it, Scott, didn't we?
I don't know, it was like somebody with a, looked like an artist as opposed to just like-
Sign around.
Yeah, I mean, not that sign around isn't an artist, but, I mean, there was a, a young lady up there with a paintbrush, like, you know.
I believe, we get a lot of, we get a lot of signs done by sign around.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Alright, well, executive director report?
Yes. Okay, so it's been a busy month for me here. We had a very successful Witches Night. I spoke with our sponsor and got some feedback from the sponsor of the event, and they said that they got seventy-five leads, which was the best that they've ever had from an event that they've been associated with, so they were very pleased with their contribution, the return on investment from their time at our event and the money provided. A lot of the time has been spent with transition work and also with event implementation, so we had the ladies shopping event, dudes day, which as Holly had mentioned, I think that's something we want to think about, you know, as we're talking about what we're looking at for 2025, that would be something we would probably want to spend more time thinking about when a good time for that would be. It was a little, I don't know that we had enough time to really move forward with it in the way that I would like to see us do it. Remembrance Day slash Small Business Saturday, things are looking good for that. We've gotten some feedback on the positive and also on the negative for having those events on the same day. The Soup and Sweet Stroll has been the big one, and then we also have the Polar Express and Holiday Market. I've secured two thousand dollars worth of sponsorships for the Soup and Street, Sweet Stroll event. One of the things that I would like to do, moving into this role, is develop a work plan for the events and the activities that we do, something a little bit more structured. So I started that process, and we've started piloting a little bit through our promotions committee, just to keep people organized and on track. Also, I'd like to develop a post-event reporting process, so just kind of looking at the analytics around what, what the, what is the return on our investment, both monetarily and then administratively. So getting feedback from our sponsors, talking to business owners, talking to community members or people that have participated in the event, these are things, you know, if they're not done, it's just ideas that I'm having currently, and I'd like to implement over, over time. Met with All for Oxford Advisory Committee and the Resiliency Center multiple times over the last month, talking about Remembrance Day and making sure that we're communicating appropriately from a business standpoint. We had the huddle, huddle meeting with business owners, the trolley winter schedule, so I have that under new business. That's actually a different topic, but we can pause for that as well. But because of some maintenance requirements, the trolley's end date will be November thirtieth. They will run for our events in December, so they'll run for four days in December. But other than that, it'll be offline, it'll be getting the maintenance and repairs that are required, and then we, once we get that information, we'll decide when it can come back up running, or when the weather gets better, because the issue is that there's no heat on the trolley. So the driver will not drive under a certain temperature, and it's not great for passengers either. So we need to get that fixed, and I think timing has been an issue historically for being able to take the time to make the repairs. Attended all of the committee meetings that were held over the last month, met with Lake Orion DDA Weekly. I attended the MDA statewide conference, which is the, the certificate that we had been discussing regarding this position. So had I been part of that program, I would have knocked a couple of classes out from attending that conference, but unfortunately, they do knock out. And I presented on our gift card program, so that was actually received very well. People were pretty excited about it. I, you know, I didn't know what to expect, because I didn't know what other communities did, but it sounds like we have a pretty great program. So that was really interesting and exciting to see. Matched some downtown businesses with the Oxford Middle School Art Program to showcase student art within their space, received a lot of positive feedback about that. So thank you to all of the businesses that were open to having that art. The art teacher goes into the business, they will, she will change out the art as needed. All you need to do from a commitment standpoint is offer a space to have art. So if there's anybody that you know, or if you want to do it and you didn't hop in, I can get you that contact information. It's very, very easy, she handles everything. She frames it, she comes in, she hangs it, she takes it down, she flips it. It's very cool. And the kids, seeing some of the pictures of the students next to their art, they, they are so excited and proud. So it's really cool to see. Met with Oakland County, our liaison on the requirements for somebody in this role and the resources available. We had our Main Street America accreditation kickoff meeting, kind of walking through the process, walking through the timing. Our accreditation in Oxford will be on February fifth, so please mark your calendars for that. Once Soup and Sweet Stroll and the Market and Polar Express are over, then I will be focusing on that. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Coffee Connect to share what the DDA is working on and network as well. Attended Shop OC Main Street Manager Meeting, reviewing committee processes. Rod mentioned some of it, just making sure that all of our ducks are in a row when it comes to who's in what committee, what paperwork they've filled out, processes, like what they're in charge of, kind of deliverables, that kind of thing. Reviewing recurrent expenditures and identifying cost savings. Just going through the first cycle myself, from a bill, billing and budgetary standpoint, I've identified a couple areas where we can eliminate some costs, so that's pretty exciting. And then as always, volunteers are encouraged and welcome for all of our events.
Thank you. Now you get to take a deep breath and move on to unfinished and old business strategic plan update?
Yes. So I will say, I, Christina and I have not had an opportunity to connect. She did send this, and I have it in your packet. This is our work plan that she created, I believe. As I mentioned, I was not here when she presented to the board, so I don't know exactly, that's where her and I would need to meet to walk through it, but just self, self educating, I think it seems pretty logical that these are action items that we have agreed to from a board standpoint, coming out of that strategic planning meeting. So I think we need to talk as a board, as a team, to think about how we want to use this going forward, maybe what the priorities are. It looks like we have two number ones. Oh, no, we have more number ones. So I think the messaging for this meeting is, this is what we have, this was the deliverable that was promised. I think we could review it and come back at our next meeting, prepared to have more discussion around it, and really think about as we're moving into 2025, what we want our priorities to be.
Just a question, would this naturally fall with any one of our committees to kind of take the lead on that? Or is this something you really want to address with just the board and with the board?
I think eventually they will go to the committees, certainly. I think, you know, I learned quite a bit at this conference, just understanding how different DDAs are structured and kind of the processes that they use. I see a lot of potential to empower the committees to do more than maybe what they've been doing historically. As an example, we had a promo committee meeting today, and I was all about, well, what do you guys want to do? Why don't you tell me, give me your ideas? And the promo committee was amazing and had fantastic ideas. Holly had some amazing ideas walking into Soup and Street, Sweet. So it's just a different, a different mindset, a different strategy around utilizing the committees. I will be very honest, I have not had a lot of time to look through the strategic plan or this. I've spent a lot of my time again on the events and just keeping the boat afloat with administrative tasks. So like, once Soup and Sweet and the Polar Express is over, this is something I'm happy to dig more into. So I don't know that I can fully answer your question, other than yes, both probably.
Item eight B is staffing, I don't know if we have anything more to add, we did talk about that headline.
Yeah, so the only thing that I would like to add is, I, as mentioned, I have the job description that I put together for the org committee, it's on the backside of your packet. The feedback was shared today from Brad that he would like to, the org committee has recommended a reduction in the hours, which I don't agree with. So I think it would be up to vote or put a motion to accept it and be able to move forward with a job, with this job description, and being able to post it and interview applicants and make a hiring decision.
So this is your proposal that you-
Correct.
What if we did something, what if we did something, I agree with what the workload is, something that is because of the number of events going forward, as you just indicated? So that might reduce as the board gets back on track. The possibility would be starting with this and then expanding to what level, were you thinking about, Kimberly? Because I think this said twenty hours, is that what Brad said?
He wanted to, he recommended ten to twenty instead of twenty to thirty.
So could we potentially go, start with twenty now and then bump it up to thirty as we go forward? I mean, that's kind of, you started with like ten or twelve, didn't you, or something like that?
I believe I had a max of twenty when I first started, and then a max of twenty-five over the last year.
You have a question?
I'm not sure if Jill can answer this or not, but do we have to go through the same process with this hire?
No, this is all the board's decision.
This is DDA work.
This is just the board, it doesn't have to go through council.
Right.
Because it's actually the director's decision, right?
Correct.
Of to go to hire, or do we have to?
No.
Will you approve that?
Go ahead, John.
No, I, I think it starts to hire somebody, but the person's under the direction of the executive director once they're hired.
Sure, okay.
I think from a collaboration standpoint, it would make sense to have that, have you all on board with the same person that I would like to hire. I don't have anybody in mind at this point.
Yeah, Catherine.
Second question, what was budgeted for this position? What's currently in the budget?
Well, at least-
For this position?
That's a-
For your position?
For my position?
Your old position.
My old position, I would have to look on, I don't know the answer offhand. I believe it covered, because I think when I moved from twenty to twenty-five hours, that was right after the budget went into effect in July. So my assumption would be that it was enough to cover at least twenty-five hours at my rate that I was being paid.
Okay.
Would that make sense?
But it was, the budget was adopted in May.
Oh, okay.
So whatever the figures were proposed in May is left in the budget. But again, you have a little headroom between the time frame, we only have one person on a drawn salary versus two.
Sure.
And then you also have a lesser salary here, so there's a headroom built into that. So if those modest changes between twenty hours in May adopted and moved to twenty-five in July, that's five hours a week, and say a hundred, a hundred bucks a week, that's pretty small and bigger overall budget, so. You could, you could go back to similar- So you could, you could go back to similar, what she's saying, twenty-five at twenty-one.
Yeah.
And still we can not worry about a long budget.
Yeah.
Yes, Scott.
I guess my only observation would be, um, we really want to attract talent, right? Like this is somebody we want to find another superstar like Kimberly wants. And if you see, um, a job posting that you only have the potential to work up to twenty hours, that, that might, that might stop people from um, being more open about applying for it. I mean, I, I think the twenty to thirty hours, if, if we're using the discretion that we kind of have a, hey, you're going to stick it twenty hours and then on event days or event weeks, you're going to go up more. I just, I don't necessarily agree that we need to handcuff it at, at ten hours, cause that's not really a realistic hour, I would think.
Not at all.
So the, the timing for the hiring of this person, is it looking like January versus December? Because obviously we're a lot busier in December than we are in January. Um, and my opinion is that since the strategic planning resulted in information that needs this position to be full-time at forty hours, I'm not really comfortable with just going to twenty.
I don't imagine that we would find a candidate and go through the interview process with the org committee and have somebody prepared to speak to the board in four weeks.
Yeah.
I think it would be, that's a stretch. It would have to be a very stars, moon, sun in alignment to find the right candidate. Because to Scott's point, I'm not looking for someone to fill an administrative role. I'm looking for someone to come in and look to, to grow. So similar to maybe my progression, I came in and had, you know, up to twenty hours and then, you know, became more invested and more involved in the DDA and then started taking on more and then moved into an assistant director type role. Um, and then there was conversation about having that become full-time. So I'm looking, I'm not looking for just a place filler, I'm looking for somebody that's invested and committed and interested.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the timing, unfortunately we're really busy now, but we're not ready to hire and train somebody.
Yeah, in hindsight, in hindsight, if we had a better, you know, more operate or lead time to do this, but with the previous director abruptly resigning, we're kind of pushing things. I think the committee got to work on this pretty quickly after we had our meeting to get it back that quick. I'm, I'm impressed Brad got it to you already and I can see what you're saying that January is a little bit slower, et cetera, et cetera. I don't necessarily buy the idea that we need someone full-time just because this outside person said we need a full-time person.
Well, I, I think the job could grow into being full-time. I don't think it's going to be full-time in January. We, the need's not there. But, um, I'm just trying to establish the number of hours that we feel comfortable with. And I think the twenty to thirty is definitely the right range. And then we'll just see how the whole year goes and whether we, we go beyond that, but
Agreed.
Um, doing thirty right now, I don't think is the right timing.
Did we, uh, Maria?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood, do you know when the benefits kick in, how many hours, or Scott, you might know from your business?
That's kind of a.
Thirty-two isn't it?
It was thirty-two. It was thirty-two, cause you want to stay below that.
Yeah.
You know, I think it kicks in less than that. In our personal manuals, if you're regularly scheduled twenty hours a week or more, then you're, you're okay with holidays and the others. That's the only benefit.
What? I wasn't given that information.
Well, are you looking for a motion from us though?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion to proceed with the hiring process of the job description. As it stands, I am willing to add the availability piece in it, but I, I think it sounds like you guys are in agreement to keep it twenty to thirty. And I agree with you, I'm not looking to have somebody come in and work thirty if we only need twenty. I think the conversation is a bigger conversation about what do you see as the DDA is doing over the next year or two? I mean, that will dictate whether we need a full-time person or not.
That's true. But, yes, yes.
But that's, you just said the key thing for the, the board here is what, what do we expect the DDA to do? You know, we, in my opinion, we've gotten wrapped up in too many events and that sucks up a lot of time on things that I think are superfluous. And that, that goes back to how many hours somebody works.
But I think also, you know, as we went through, as I went through the process with the village and the expectations they have of somebody in the director role, that would then not allow the director to participate as much in the activities that they have done historically. So then that needs to go somewhere. So even if we're not doing as many events, we are still going to have events. And not that the director wouldn't be involved, but if they're busy doing X, Y, and Z, they can't do A, B, and C plus X, Y, and Z for you know what I'm saying?
I, I don't know, I think, again, my opinion is that the community loves the events, the businesses love the events, so they, they are key. I know, I, I know Rod's objection to the party planner, you know, aspects, but.
Well, my objection quite frankly is who's doing, for example, if we have a pep assembly, is that a school district option, not the DDA option?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's the old stand, standing in the lane kind of thing.
Yeah.
You know, some of the events I see going on should, should not be under the auspices of the DDA.
But.
It should be under some entity, so we get sucked in every, we get sucked in every event that goes on unnecessarily. And I, and I understand the reason it's fun to do and stuff like that and some businesses benefit. You know, some do, some don't, but it gets into, is that the responsibility, as Kimberly said, of the DDA to do every event that comes down the street?
I think, you know, again, I think this is a larger strategic discussion. I think there is an opportunity for a win-win of both having the events and having more of the administrative and government piece. Um, but that's not going to happen when you have somebody working ten hours a week to support the director. I mean, it's just not, I mean, that kind of goes back to the offer piece of, you know, we want you to do all of these classes, but when's the, when am I going to do them? Especially if I have somebody for ten hours versus thirty, I mean, I'm not, I'm not given the tools to succeed if we're going to reduce the resources.
Absolutely.
Or the, let me rephrase that, the DDA will not have the tools to succeed if the resources are not provided.
Okay, well, I can make a motion.
I don't think you can make a motion, can you?
Oh, I don't know.
She can.
Is the chair?
I'm just asking, chair, not the real chair.
You got the hat.
That's right, ma'am. No, someone else is welcome to do it if they want to.
Go ahead, do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal as outlined by Kimberly to have, to hire or look for a assistant director at the rate of seventeen to twenty dollars per hour and twenty to thirty hours per week.
I support that.
Can we add on, should we use the job provision provided by the organization committee?
Yes.
This was, I mean, this wasn't provided by the org committee though.
I was talking about the add-on that he put in there too.
Well, I, I don't, I don't agree with that because what the org committee is suggesting is the ten to twenty hours a week.
Well, I understand, is that the only difference there was the ten to twenty?
There, there were two suggestions, one with the hours and one with the availability clause.
But otherwise this includes.
But otherwise. Yeah, and I'm fine with that, absolutely.
She did want to incorporate that availability clause.
Sure.
Okay, good, good.
We should probably do a call, right, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Taylor?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Lycia?
Yes.
Canass?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Colvin, yes, Charles?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes. Karen? I think we're done with these, right?
Yes.
Okay, new business, holiday lights.
Okay, so this quote that was in your packet is, um, the quote from Excel Brothers for the holiday lights going downtown this holiday season. Um, looking at it from last year, it's very consistent, it's actually cheaper, um, than last year, about four hundred dollars less. And the reason for that was because there were bows purchased last year, so those bows will be reused this year. Um, again, it's going to be the same, the same structure as it was last year. There will be lights on the trees, lights around the, um, street poles and then a couple things in the park.
Cool.
Um, just a request, is there any way we can not have any new lights on the flagpole this year?
In the park?
Yeah.
Is it the lights that go?
Yeah, the cross ones onto the flagpole. It's, Joe's mentioned it a couple other times, it's a structural issue.
Okay.
And then I know that there's veterans and whatnot that also have issues with them.
Was that a line item on this?
Um, I don't, I don't think it is, I think that was, that might have been, I think something happened last year, I'll have to look into it.
It started caving in is what it did.
I think they took them down or they don't use them or they lowered them or something. Yeah. But yeah, so that's a separate issue, but yes, I can look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire Excel Brothers to hang Christmas lights in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, um.
Piper?
Yes.
Colvin, yes, Charles?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Canass?
Yes.
Lycia?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ian Powers?
Yes. Okay, next is the trolley.
So this line item is around, I've gotten a lot of requests over the last month of people wanting to use the trolley and I know that his, like, public groups. Um, I know that historically, I, my understanding has been that we are not renting the trolley out. We're using it for our purposes of the back and forth or events that we have. However, it was brought to my attention that there was a group that utilized it recently for some sort of tour. I want to say the Daughters of American Revolution or something of that nature. So I'm just trying to understand the parameters around when we say yes to renting it out or allowing people outside of our organization to use the trolley and like what has been approved or discussed in the past? And if we're still good with that.
From memory, uh.
Yes, Rod.
From these protocols, right?
Yes. The chair recognizes Rod Charles.
I don't want to get any more hypocritical than that. You know, originally we just wanted it for DDA purposes, since it was a DDA entity, you know, us and Orion. And then we decided that we would potentially rent it out. That was a conversation we had in a few, few meetings. Um, and then more recently though, my concern would be with the maintenance issues that you just brought up. If we rent it out and there's no heat, and we had issues where the driver was complaining about exhaust coming in the cab. I'm personally okay with renting it out with certain restrictions about distance, et cetera, but then I worry about the maintenance issue if it breaks down in the middle of somebody using it for a wedding or something.
Right, it breaks in the middle and then are we responsible for getting all those people somewhere?
Right.
Didn't we have a discussion about giving, letting, letting Noda use it and letting them rent it through Noda?
Well, that's one reason we decided to utilize Noda as opposed to having our employees, because they have the employees that was under auspices. Yeah, the insurance, et cetera. I, I like the idea, I just worry about the thing breaking down, that's all. And it has a limited life expectancy, as I said earlier in this conversation.
Do we know, does anyone know why that group was given approval to utilize it?
First I've heard of it.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know, I didn't approve it.
I was not aware. I think that was before my time.
Yeah.
The Daughters of American Revolution.
I never heard of that before.
Yeah, I wasn't aware.
When did it occur?
Within the last couple of months, I think. I can, I know someone who's in that group, so I can reach out to that person and get more information that way. I just wasn't sure if there was something agreed upon from the board's perspective, cause as I mentioned, historically, I've always said, no, we don't rent it. Because it's for those same reasons and just the liability, how do we decide that this group gets it and this group doesn't? I feel like that kind of goes back into that sticky area of us making determinations on what we value, you know what I mean? We're valuing this organization more than that one.
That's right.
Feel uncomfortable with that.
Kimberly, if you could find out, let us know, that'd be appreciative. I, you know, I thought originally the other conversation about was if we could go to some other communities and bring people into Oxford is what the conversation was. Go up to LaPierre, go to Brandon, Carston, Rochester, that's how we were originally kicking around.
Yeah, and I do remember that. I think, I just think with all of the maintenance issues, that kind of got put on the back burner, but hopefully the next couple of months we'll see some improvements in that area. And if not, then as we talked in the org committee, we can really dig more into what do we want to do? If this is becoming more of a financial burden than a benefit, can we get the same experience, but with a different piece of equipment? Yes, that too.
Such a people.
Details. All right. Well, last one, agenda.
Org committee appointment.
Yeah, yes, org, org committee, thank you, I'm still.
So that line, or that item is, um, it was brought to my attention that the, any new member into a committee needs to be approved by the board. So Pete has recommended Scott Taylor to join the organization committee and so we would need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Scott Taylor's appointment to the org, next org committee.
I'll second.
Do a voice vote.
Yes, sure.
All in favor?
Okay. A vote, please?
You can just do.
Just do a voice vote.
Oh, okay, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Uh, White House District.
White House District, so I had, it's been brought to my attention that the White House District would like to somehow get some funding together for beautification of that space. They don't believe that the current building owner in that area will support that. Um, so they have been reaching out to me around utilizing sponsorships and fundraising options to get funding to make improvements in that area. I would like to bring that to the board for discussion, um, because it's not something that we have discussed before, me and my role and my predecessor. So I don't know if it's been discussed before, um, if not, what the thoughts are around that. I don't know historically if this has been done before of having funding or sponsorships for just a specific area within the district. I don't know if that's okay.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, that's what we have facade grants for.
Yeah.
So I think it's, they're talking about more around like they want to do a kiosk in the space and have like a map, so like how we do downtown.
I, you know, going back to, you know, the landlord over there has some responsibility for some of his items. If that's what they're complaining about, they probably need to bring it up to the landlord there. I think our job would be facade grants, et cetera. Otherwise we could do it in a lot of other places. And if there's something we're doing here, like you said, maybe a sign that says shopping district this way, I don't know about that, that could even be a proposal too.
Okay.
Do we pay for the maps?
Pardon me?
Like, do we pay for, did the DDA pay for the maps that are like in front of my store and?
The kiosks? Yeah, those, I, I'm a, I don't know the answer to that, I'm assuming so.
With the M twenty-four?
Probably, I believe.
That was M twenty-four, you're right.
Input for a grant, cover a lot of that.
There's nothing like that down there?
No.
But that's, that was, that was an M dot expenditure, wasn't it, Mr. Wood?
Well, no, that was part of the streetscape, the M dot was doing the road, actually the biggest reason was the underground water, um, systems, the wide system project. We think that kind of, so the downtown streetscape and then actually full length, we did all the new lights from north to south. All part of the village sized DDA improvement for the streetscape. You just got to be careful when you get outside of downtown or the C one corridor transition has different setbacks and vision things and things like that. Um, if you recall, the one across from you and kind of forty more, we had to turn it because the way it was positioned perpendicular to the road, you couldn't see south when you're kind of on East Street.
Right.
After that thing was already cemented in the ground, they had to come out and redo it. That's the only way you see the parallel of the road, and that's because the line side was, it was too much. If you were to go down south of that neck of the woods, even if someone put a sign on their business, I think it's like three or five feet behind the side block before that sign got put in. So technically, technically you're in their property at that point. It's a private property, so, you know, there's.
So it's on private property down there, I see.
There's reasons why things haven't happened, perhaps?
Well, I don't know if this has ever been asked, but just if you are mentioned down there, there's other things to take into account. It's not as easy to downtown where it's walkable with all communities and, you know, all of those in the M dot right away to some degree, you must have been down there changed, but then you get out there and within your own private property. But then you get out there, within your own private property. Or here, you know, it's like M dot right away, it was all approved by them.
I don't think they need another sign down there, do they?
You wouldn't see it.
So I think maybe the question that I have, and that's something Joe and I can talk about offline, about the details of what would make sense, but more around what is the philosophy from the board of a group of businesses trying to fundraise money for their space? Or do we not want to be involved in that, and if they handle that themselves?
I'm...
I was just, I think they shouldn't even do that on their own. I don't see that really as a DDA function. And as far as beautification, that's, it's clearly the landlord's responsibility if things are repainting or...
Okay.
Just to, just to Rob's point, that's exactly why we have facade and sign grants.
Yeah.
That's why we have it.
Right.
Thank you.
And we have nine E, which is the holiday event.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up. I know this is my third holiday through in the DDA. I, we know we've had gatherings in the last couple of years of the board, the committee members just celebrating the holiday season. Is that something that we want to try and do again?
Yes.
There we go.
Is everybody going to talk? Second, we got a second.
Excellent.
For the record, everyone bought their own meal and drinks.
Yeah.
That was a pizza.
Well, it can be.
Bury. Yeah, we got all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, we hosted it last year.
Yeah, I know we did drinks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had, we had buffet, too, I thought.
Yes, we did.
We did a buffet.
We did.
We all paid.
We all paid, right, right.
Yeah, just make sure.
Yes.
Got it, got it.
Joe, the only issue we face, I think, is, is, you know, in today's world, we're all busy people, right? Nobody I've ever met says they're not busy. So fitting it in a date where people can make is another, is a separate issue. But I know especially now, it's, December's jammed for a lot of people.
We can try, we can try.
We can make it tomorrow.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
All right. So you're, Kimberly is going to explore that?
Yes.
Okay. The added agenda item under new business was the resignation of Leanne Knoss.
It's true.
It's true.
It's me. Want to get to these?
Yes, you're parting, you're parting words.
Well, first of all, I just want to say, this has been an amazing couple of years, just getting to be a very tiny part of everything going on in town and getting to meet some amazing people. So I'm very grateful for that. I was always only intended to serve one year, just to get away of the land. But last year, when, on the meeting that I was going to resign, I think Dorothy also resigned. And I froze up a little, and I didn't want to double down on the board, so I thought I could stick it out for another year. But just between my work schedule and traveling, I'm just spread a little too thin. I just feel like this seat deserves, you know, somebody who's a little bit more committed consistently and can follow through those extra hours. So I just, Derek, it's the right time. But I've just loved being a little bit of a fly on the wall and, you know, just being part of the downtown community and having it grow, but I will see everybody around, so thank you all for the opportunity.
And you're still going to run the park?
Oh, yeah. I do intend to still bring that to the festival every year, so.
Do we have to vote, or?
We have to make a motion.
We have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Leanne Knoss from the DDA.
All in favor, reluctantly? No, sorry, I said something. Did you second it, Rob?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
What?
I can't vote, I can't vote.
Your vote, you wish for, I guess.
All right. Item ten, there were no items removed from consent agenda. Board member comments? We'll start from there. Anything else to add?
One hand, no.
Not, not anything.
Everybody appreciate that.
Okay.
Piggybacking off of that, I am not in the district anymore. So to my knowledge, nobody else is on the board, right? And that's a requirement, to have somebody as a board member.
Did you move your house?
In the district. He moved out.
I did move.
Oh, he did move?
Yes. So just as we go to fill this seat, that's something we need to...
I'm in the village, deserve that.
You are? Do we need one?
Can you double?
I thought we needed two.
I don't know if we can double down.
Yes, 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 please, Joe. He knows something.
So, well, no, a couple things. For one, a lady talked to me last week about showing your house, had some questions about it. So I offered her good luck, so I don't know if that's settled to her or not, but, or maybe you just moved. I don't know. But I gave her some good info and... And your term is one of the terms expiring at the end of this year. So Kelsey was wondering, you know, what's going to happen with, I think Rob's term is up at the end of this year as well. So as those overlapping terms come around, you know, council president will weigh those out on appointments, reappointments, and she collects applications for new members. So obviously, now for sure, she'll have a new member. But to raise this point, the statute reads, there's a name of a board. A majority must have an interest in the downtown, interests living there, working there, owning property there, those kind of things. So at least five of you must have a major, an interest. And if you have over a hundred or more residents, one must be a resident. A hundred more residents of the district. And our district is kind of really weird way with up around mafia and all that stuff. So that's why there is, we believe a requirement to have a resident of the district on the board. So that's something else, that's a little tougher to find. When I know Rod or someone, I've even said years ago, they almost went knocking door to door to say, hey, you live here, can you, can you sit on this door? So again, that may take a little longer to fill, because it's not as able to be filled, you know? Leanne lives out, out of town, we have certain, like, members at large, so to speak. Again, the majority must be, have an interest. One automatically by statute is the council president, or there doesn't mean, which Jake was filling that role. And so that brings it down to six, at least only three left, and one of those must be a resident. So that's why, how it lays out how the statute requires that member should be.
Can he double it, since he's also a resident?
He doesn't live in the district.
Yeah, he does.
He lives in the village, but not...
In the village, not in the DDA district.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
I think the statute says if, if the district has a hundred more residents, then you are required to have a district resident.
I know that's what I said, but maybe I didn't.
I think that's what you said.
What is the...
Yes, Kimberly.
What is the process, then, for sourcing a new board member? Do, does the DDA look for applicants?
All applications go to the council president, and the council president makes recommendations to the rest of the council, and the council approves, and that person's on the board.
So do we as the DDA look for applicants?
You can absolutely market for them and talk to people about them and send those applications in, and those applications can go directly to Kelsey.
Okay.
They don't need to go to administration or report, but they can go directly to the council president. I think that's what's given, we have a board application on our website for, whether it's planning, zoning, beautification, DDA, you can check which box you'd like on there, and then those should go to the council president directly.
Can I ask another question?
No.
One per. So is there any, any feedback from the board on who the board should?
You guys are always welcome to give your opinion and feedback.
Okay.
Like, anything else, like, like, you know, planning commissioner, things like that. But the recommendations are always brought forward and recommended by the council president, whether it's planning commissions, zoning board appeals, beautification commission, or this board as well.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because I think in the past, for new board members, we've had them meet this board first, if I remember correctly.
Which is not really the proper way to do it.
Okay.
Again, you guys can, not in a formal process, I should say, there's not a formal process. It's, the recommendation is the statute is going squarely with council president to make recommendations to all those boards. You're welcome to have input, welcome to have conversations, you're welcome to direct people to have conversations with the council president. And you're welcome to, you know, search for people on behalf and say, please, you know, go to our website, we have the board application on there, fill it out, it talks why you want to be this, predict your board, and things like that. And then those are then brought to council by the president for, for recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Did it?
I'll bug you tomorrow.
All right, well, let's continue with the board comments. Scott, you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm good, I feel like I've talked a lot.
Can I, I have a question?
Yes.
Bryce, are you planning to stay on the board, just not as the resident of the district?
As long as I have vested interest in Oxford, which based on your short description, I still do.
Of the district, of the downtown district, interested in the district. Again, we only have, so Catherine Culver is, is not of interest in the district. She is a member at large, then, that is allowed to be chosen by the township. Leanne is a member at large, so to speak, with no vested interest, vested interest as well. Rest of you, and Pete as well, does not longer have a vested interest. You only have your three maximum, not vested interest.
So are the one and only.
So, so yeah, if you don't no longer satisfy that requirement, then, you wouldn't qualify. We do a DDA.
Okay.
But you could move into Leanne's, though, couldn't you? And then refill or backfill him with somebody who lived in the district?
That's possible, too, yes, because again, there are three eligible, what are called members at large, so to speak, that don't have that vested interest.
Do you want to stay on the board, or are you, are thinking?
Wouldn't have a spot right now.
I know, why? I just don't want to gloss over, if you were coming to the meeting, planning to say, I'm done, like, like Leanne is, or if you're just saying, hey, by the way, FYI.
Yeah, not at this time, I plan to stay on the board if, if I still can.
There you go. Yeah, because I think your terms, at least another year and a half, too. I think the little group, I think this year were Rob and Leanne expiring.
To be honest, I forget, wouldn't I?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, sorry to see you go, Leanne. You will be missed, and I guess that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. My, my sentiments also, I miss you. But we're going to grab you every now and then.
Yes.
I'm not going to say that.
And Kimberly, great job.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Even being one armed.
Yeah, yeah, one thought on the, on the lights downtown, we got a lot of compliments on that, but one of the thoughts would be is reimbursing the people that are paying the bills.
I just got a call about that, interestingly enough.
Okay, it's minor, right? It's very small.
That's something I need some guidance on, because I was not part of that agreement, so...
Well, we talked about it briefly, one of the meetings I was at, and...
We just talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the thought was maybe per light bulb on the building, because sometimes the lights cover several buildings, whoever is paying the tab. I don't think it's very expensive, but I think it'd be a good gesture, so if somebody had a bill for fifteen bucks, because there are LED lights, so not very expensive, but at least give them the fifteen bucks or something like that. It won't break our budget, I don't think. So yeah, if you go look into that, Kimberly, sorry, I didn't think about it earlier, so. Another thing, I want to thank you, Kimberly, for the comments I've heard from people in my wandering through town about the committee meetings, that the committee people are actually taking charge of committees now. You know, that's something I heard from several people, by the way, that, that the committee is actually run as a committee. So thank you very much. The third, the, the soup and sweet, I've said this before, you know, that's been a great event the last couple of years. I worked on it for maybe twenty years, and it's been phenomenal, it gets better every year. And one of the great ideas that the previous executive director had, that's phenomenal, is selling tickets in advance. And I said, because for years, I would stand up and freeze my fingertips off. You know, the bitter rain and cold and all that terrible stuff, and now we can do it all, the comfort of, you know, office. So thank you for that, and other things I mentioned, Kimberly.
Yeah, Catherine?
Well, thank you, Leanne. It's nice having you around. Everything's good?
Oh, yeah, that's...
Leanne, you will be missed, you know, especially in the promotions area. And Kimberly, you've been doing a great job with the transition, and yeah, I think the way you've been running at least the meetings I've been involved in, I mean, we're all contributing, so yeah, it's been great. Thanks. May I have your thanks, Kimberly?
That's it, oh, Joe, did you have a comment?
Okay. I'm a member, because I'm non-voting man.
You still have a pen.
Couple things, so Pete and I met with Row a couple of months, a month or so ago, walked, walked the crosswalk areas. We got some feedback from Row about the design, and with Sharp Engineering, but the diagonal sign by the monogram shop, that just was not going to work, so we're going to realign it, so it's straighter across, it meets the design standards and safety standards across from the monogram shop. But now that we've gotten that feedback from them, and with Pete and you, I think both had one day, a couple of weeks ago, Row's will work on a cost estimate of what they see for that project. And when we walked it that day, Pete and I, I think Paul from Row as well, there were several spots from the four corners downward towards the crosswalks, where there's going to be some sidewalk replacements here and there, too, that are broken or bad shape or something. So you'll see a lot of that all into that cost estimate as well. So it won't be specifically just this crosswalk and that crosswalk, there'll be some pavement repairs and replacements in that area as well. Some of the old brick favors that were just outside of the scope of the M twenty-four project are there, and they're pretty uneven and sunken and stuff, so those will be replaced with concrete. So hopefully, we can get something to you by the center meetings, at least you'll be an idea of the cost scope, the scope and then cost, I guess separately, but all rolled into one. You may have noticed in the last month or so, we've had four of our streetlights knocked out by errant drivers. Three of them, I one of them, all on one night.
Oh, my God.
At least with that one, first off, nobody was certain, and anything, at least we're not sure in a second one, but the first one, it took out three of them. But the good thing about that one is we had a police report, we have a, a person, a driver, and so our insurance company is able to subrogate against that insurance company, so we don't end up getting hit with a thousand dollar drop load, because every time we have a claim, we have a thousand dollar drop load, and never a quarter goes by, we don't have a claim, somebody hit something downtown. The other light that was taken out, and we didn't realize it until the next morning, there was no police report, nothing. Luckily, we had four backed up in stock, so all four of them are out now with ordered replacements. The insurance companies covered those. But the one we didn't have, a suspect or a car vehicle, so there will be a thousand dollar drop load for, for us on our insurance, because that's just not charged against us. Just something else to take into account on the overall cost of the district. Those additional lights that were part of the M twenty-four project now extend all the way down to the north and south. We have an additional power panel down there by the Sunoco Station on Lincoln Street that powers the south end lights, because it was just too far. So there's additional bill we get each month to pay for that. Some of those costs are, I scratched service on them when we met the org committee back in, I think it was April, it was real close to the budget time. We want to start that process of sharing those costs with the DDA, whether it's org committee or full board, talk about our costs and how they've grown in my seven years being here. And we, we did increase the ten thousand dollar cost asked for the DDA, was approved at the last minute. It was kind of a last minute, too close, the budget really had those kind of stations. We want to start it earlier. Council, we meet and have a couple budget workshops, where we sit in the community room, we have pizza, whatever, we're there for a couple of hours, going through our budget plan and, line by line. Kelsey Cook, maybe we can do a joint budget workshop with the DDA as well, as we work towards, you know, melding everything together, explaining our costs for the district and things like that. So once the holidays are over, New Year starts, that's about it, it's up to them to start. Right after that, thank you. Other than that, I want to congratulate Kimberly.
Oh, no, it's a question, it's important.
Okay.
Will there be pizza there?
Sometimes, sometimes pizza, sometimes other stuff. But I want to congratulate Kimberly. I, I, I did a lot to help everyone understand that DDA, our members of the DDA board,